We all set, John? Everyone all set? I'd like to call this meeting of the regular select board to order, please. All those who are able, please stand for the pledge. And John will just please lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brittany, would you just roll call, please?
Sure. Tom Andrew, Ken Walter.
Here.
Joseph Diva.
Here.
John Boyle.
Here.
Bob Bishop.
Here.
Ed Hollins.
Here.
And Mark Schaff.
Yes, here.
There are no minutes. Nancy is out, so we'll just do that at the next meeting, okay? And I'd like to announce a couple changes in our regular scheduled agenda. We had stricken out the discussion with the Newland and Berkshire Solid Waste District. They cannot make it tonight. And we have added the Dalton Civic Arts Committee's Light Up the Night Holiday Parade. And we have a resignation and an appointment to the Stormwater Commission, okay? Okay, this is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or the designated. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized and an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make that request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Now, is there anyone in here that would like to speak on any items or anything listed on the...
No, I won't.
Okay.
For the triad.
A triad?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What number?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Yeah, if necessary.
Okay. 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 First, we have on the agenda, we have Dalton Civic Arts Community Light Up the Holiday Parade. Mr. Boyle, would you make the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant permission to the CRA and the Dalton Beautification Committee to hold their annual Light Up the Holiday Parade on Saturday, December 14th, 2019, from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion's been made in seconded, so any further discussion?
Yeah, I said Beautification Committee, I meant Dalton Civic Arts Committee.
A close in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's awesome. It's usually well attended.
Yep. Ray or Shane?
Yeah, hopefully not, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we have appointments to the Dalton Beautification Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the appointment of Pamela J. Turner of 30 Sunset Drive to the Dalton Beautification Committee.
I'll second it.
For initial term, expire on June 30th, 2022.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made in seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Pam. Okay, next. First of all, we're gonna have to do a resignation on the stormwater. It's in my packet someplace. Is it in there?
It's here.
Okay. How long I have? Okay. Do you have it, John?
No.
Right here. No, you don't have it either. Try here.
No, I guess that... Who resigned?
Edward.
Oh! You raised a license. I move that we ratify the appointment of Andrew G. Perrinick of 165 High Street to the Stormwater Management Commission for an initial term to expire on June 30th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made in seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and this is to take the place of Edward, who resigned formally, and I think we have to accept it with regret, but understand.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's mine.
Okay, I almost put it in my file. You must do it quick.
Mr. Chairman, would you be all right if we took number nine out of order?
Absolutely. Okay. Okay, I got it right there. Okay, next is the resolution, Dalton Triad donation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town Dalton accept, on behalf of the Dalton Police Department, a gift of $300 and no cents dollars from the Dalton Triad to purchase traffic cones to assist Dalton police officers with public safety and visibility. Whereas the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A empowers the select board to approve the acceptance of grants or gifts of funds by any officer or department on behalf of the town.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made in seconded, is there any further discussion?
Just a note to the...
Absolutely.
Thank you, fellas. I don't know how many people are familiar with what Triad is, but I did bring some information for you. It's been around. This lady back here, Helga Knappi, started it along with Dan Filio, Chief Filio, when he was the chief. And I think Carmen Masmeano was part of it also. We can do the check, too. I thought the chief was gonna be here tonight, but he probably...
He should say Bishop.
Sorry, no. But anyways, Triad, just for those that don't know, it's a collaboration between the police department, the sheriff's department up there, the DA's office, and fire department. And it's open to any senior within Berkshire County. And there are Triads throughout, actually, the country. So we meet the third Wednesday of every month at the Senior Center. All seniors are welcome. Our numbers are increasing because we do have the chief from Hinsdale's coming down, representatives from Windsor are coming. And please come at some point. Your chairman, Mr. Bishop, came one day and kind of caught us up on what was going on in town. And you're all welcome at any time to come down to the Senior Center, 1 o'clock in the afternoon. This month, this week, we have a representative from BCAC coming to tell the seniors what's going on and what's available from BCAC. So please come and enjoy. We always have refreshments afterwards and usually have a speaker.
You don't have to be a senior.
You don't. No. We don't have to be a senior.
And I think it would be most informative for you to come, seeing that you're in the detective department. And as well as John Boyle and Mr. Diva, John Bishop comes regularly, and Margaret is involved quite a bit with us. It would be appreciated if you came down.
She is the wonderful lady that brought it to town in 1990.
Thank you. Thank you for your work and thank you for the money.
Well, you know what? It came from the south, and I'm surprised they never lynched the guy, but did it. Because it was... You don't scam a sheriff's mother, especially his mother. You can scam the wife, probably, but not the mother. And that's how it started, and it is still going. They have one out in California, Indiana, Wisconsin. I've gone to many seminars, Williamsburg, Ohio, and you see a lot and hear a lot. It is so informative, you'll really be surprised.
Thank you for starting that, it's awesome.
You might want to point out that you also have a greatly attended by all the aforementioned organizations, you have a picnic usually in July.
Yes, we always have our picnic.
And we all try to get there, burn down.
Thanks to our sheriff.
Yeah.
And even...
He's always there, yeah?
Even Carmen Masmeano started coming in on it. And then Sheriff Bowler carried on with it, and it's great. We have a wonderful picnic every year.
Yeah, I thought your DA was there.
Yeah, the DA's coming, always.
Well, thank you.
We have a Christmas party to come to.
Well, thank you, ladies. This is awesome, and thank you for the gift, and now we will vote to accept it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for your generosity and thank you for doing your hard work, okay?
Please come.
Yeah, great. And now we need to formally sign the gift, which is this one. There's a spell on there on that.
Yeah, it's missing. Is yours misspelled? With Jones.
First paragraph, where you start triad. Spelled incorrectly.
Eddie Gordon here. Oh, yeah. Right here, Trey is misspelled.
Okay.
I don't know what we do about this.
We can just sign it.
Yeah. So you decide again, too. She might be able to correct it if it's a triad. Yeah, but wait.
I think I'll do the transfer station, that's still available.
Yep.
And then we'll do that after we get rid of everybody.
After everybody gets their...
Okay, next, I'd like to move to item 10, the transfer station, the hours of the compost area first. I've received an email from a lady that's upset that they're trying to get... They can't get to the dump sometimes on Saturdays, and she has no storage for the... All her materials she needs to bring over to the brush pile. She's not the only one. There's been... I've heard from quite a few people in regards to this, especially this time of year and in the springtime, when there's heavy leaves down and stuff. And I'm hoping that we can come up with some way of opening that up more for the residents of the town. And I'm opening up for... John, do you have any input on this? I know you wanted to keep it to the one day, but is there any way possible you can open it up more days, at least one or two more days a week?
I think if we get our building and grounds maintenance person hired and on staff, maybe we could work it out. If we could have it manned, I believe we may have... We're in the process of hiring somebody, so if we could get that person on board and we can arrange to have them there a couple hours during the week, you know, maybe one other day, we could probably manage it. But other than that, if there's nobody there, they just... Everybody comes in. There's just too much.
Yeah, you see our point, too, but there's a lot of people that can't get there on Saturdays, and when they do, it's really usually packed, they said.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's the way it was years ago. I just don't... I mean, unless we have the staff, it's hard to keep...
How soon do you think this person will be on board?
Can you?
Yeah, we're going to... John and I are gonna interview him next Friday. He's already been... Remember, that's the position that's split between building maintenance and highway. So Pat has already interviewed the person, and John and I have to follow up, and then it'll be as soon as... You know, if we hire him, it'll be as soon as he can come in.
Okay, so within maybe two weeks or so?
Yeah, roughly speaking.
Okay. Any other input on the board?
These stages will be over by then.
True.
Two weeks, you give me, November.
If I recall, there were really two main issues on that time, and one was the commercial landscapers were coming in, adding to the load, which then created the second issue, which was a safety issue for our team. So it's a matter of balancing that out to offset the commercial haulers.
Yeah, there's just nobody to police the area, to keep them out. And even Saturday, they're coming in. Took some pictures this Saturday of a couple coming in. You can't stop it 100%, but it's just getting out of hand.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, feel my saying...
Sure.
So again, to reiterate that, for years and years and years, it was only open on Saturdays, and it was closed during the winter. And John suggested experiment a few years ago, trying to leave it open, and you know, we'd have the police take notice and the transfer station attendant take notice. But you can see, if you've been over there, what has happened. I mean, it's being abused, and it endangers our highway workers. I want to draw your attention to the Highway Association submitted a letter this afternoon to your consideration about their concerns, too, because they feel it endangers their members. All this chipping that they have to do in these high piles has become pretty dangerous. So I think... I agree with John. I think we probably will be able to arrange it so that we can open it one day during the week. We'll have to... When we bring the guy on board, we'll do that. But I don't think there's any possibility, unless we want to hire somebody, to keep that open the hours we've had it.
Okay, let me ask you this. How many hours a day, Saturday, does this guy work, who is currently doing it?
Well, there's nobody doing it now.
Oh, I thought somebody was doing it on Saturdays.
No, it hasn't been manned. John's just opening it on Saturdays, trying to restrict the people from coming in there during the personal haulage, basically. And people... Remember, this is only meant for residents with a sticker. You have to have a transfer station sticker to get in, and that's how we... You know, from the time I started here, it was operating that way until just a several years ago. It always operated that way. And we realized that we provided a great convenience to people to get in there all the... That's what we were trying to do, but unfortunately, you know, it's called the free rider problem. When you have some good free, it's abused, and it's been abused. And so now, unfortunately, we do have to do something about it. But like I said, I've already spoken to Pat about it, and John and I haven't quite finished talking about it, but we think, given the person's schedule being split between highway and town hall, we can make one day in addition to Saturdays available. So what we did in the past, and it was still only open on Saturdays, we assigned the transfer, our attendant, to the transfer station brush area on Saturday, and then when it was closed during the winter, we assigned them to, you know, custodial Louie's in Town Hall, Senior Center, and so library.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yeah, Gary Steiner, Town Home Terrace. I don't know, I have nothing to do with this, but I know a lot of people in Dalton. If this leaves, John, you know, it leaves a lot of that, majority. Everybody goes to Holiday Farm, and they recycle it, you know, and they don't mind. It's open all the time. You just go and you dump it off there. I mean, that's just something food for thought, maybe, that'd help you out. I don't know. Because everybody goes there. You say, "Where do you bring your leaves?" "Holiday Farm." You know that, right off Route 9, you know what that is?
Yeah.
But I don't know if you'd have to talk to Holiday Farm about that.
No, she's got a sign out there saying, "I'll take leaves," so...
Yeah, so I mean, the people maybe are more aware of it, you know?
That would help commercial guys, you know?
It's an alternative.
In the meantime... When we closed our brush pile, just...
Yeah, brush.
Like, a couple months ago, when we closed it during the week, everybody was hauling their brush up to Holiday Farm. He got inundated because we weren't taking it anymore, and now he's closed his brush pile. You can't dump it there either. You can dump leaves up there, but he won't accept brush anymore. That's how much we were taking.
Wow. Okay, so we'll have to wait for this person to get on board, I assume.
And leaves are an issue, suggest to people that they take their leaves up to...
Where does Pitts Hill take theirs to?
They can take it to Bycon or whatever it is.
They can't take it there?
Yeah. They have a resident sticker policy to take it.
I mean, here's the thing, we're providing a service, and it's... Yeah, I mean, at this point, they're just... We're gonna have to do with what we got until we can...
Yeah. Okay, so you'll let us know as soon as that person's hired, and we can get going, we'll make a public announcement on it in the meantime?
We'll come back to you with a plan for all ten hours.
Anybody out there that has leaves, if they need to do it during the week, during the Holiday Farm, but not brush?
Yeah, we can get that on the website.
Yeah.
We have one day available because of appointment restrictions, and Holiday Farm is an alternative for leaves only.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, John. Ken, we're not only doing the contract update, you want to do the contract? You got anything for the contract update?
I do, but we can do it later if you'd like.
Let's do it right now.
Okay. So I just wanted to let you know what's happening with it. Remember, there's actually two contracts going on here. One is our contract with Casella, and I've been kind of negotiating over the phone, and I'm trying to get the principal in Casella, who I'm dealing with, to come here and look at the transfer station for recycling, although he is very familiar with the transfer station because he used to work for ALI. And I've suggested to him, but I'm gonna make a formal proposal, that he keep his rates, that Casella keep its rates as they are for the rest of the fiscal year. I don't know if he'll accept that or not, but he says they're still analyzing the operations of the transfer station, so they're not really ready to get into the financial aspects. And I said, "Great, at least keep the prices to the end of the calendar year, and why don't you keep them to the end of the fiscal year?" So that's where we stand with that. So that's the first contract. The second contract is, the materials recycling facility down in Springfield is renewing its contract with all the communities in western Massachusetts. And for the very first time, the proposal has a requirement that the communities pay a tipping fee. Well, it's gonna be roughly $100 a ton, and right now, the recyclables are only bringing about $10, $20 a ton in return when they process the recyclables. We have to sign onto that by January if we're gonna continue with it, but we've gotta send our recyclables somewhere. So I gotta find... I'll come back to you, and we'll have a little more in-depth discussion about it. But I wanted to let you know that that's going on, too, and that's the second part of this whole process.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Okay. And I would like to go right down to item 11, open as a mobile home rent control board. And so we are officially open as a rent control board. And first on the list is the certificate of compliance for the installation of a septic system by DEEP Associates. Ken, do you want to talk about that?
Let me... My packet here. There, in your packet, you'll see a letter dated March 25th, 2015, from me to Mr. DEEP, following his presentation for the select board for an increase in rent. And at the time, the board approved a $40 increase immediately while he was installing the septic system. And Phase 2, which was expected to have been done by May of 2016, after installing the septic system, getting a certificate of compliance from our Board of Health. That has just taken place, and Mr. DEEP, you will see a communication from him to me dated October 9th, saying that it's effective. Here's a certificate, which is attached, and he is now requesting the additional $40 a month increase in his rent. You'll also see in your packet, from our own town code, the standards by which rents are adjusted.
I had a talk with Ed Fahey about this, and she seemed very happy that it was done. But on the contrary, too, I met with some of the residents up there, and I have many pages of complaints in regards to the construction of this. And there's a couple of them that said there's old septic systems wanting removed. So I think before we grant him this increase, I think we need to investigate this to make sure this is all done. And I'm not really... It'll probably take a month or so to go through all these, to meet with some of the residents and actually see it. And they do have legitimate complaints. They have no other voice but us, so I think we should make sure we got our... Make sure it's right for them, okay? And John, do you want to say?
No, I just... I move that we postpone the action on this rental request increase until the meeting in December.
I'll second that. December 9th.
All those in favor?
Can you open up for discussion?
Nope.
We've been waiting since May of 20... May 1st, 2016 was supposed to be done.
Right.
So I mean, I think you can wait a couple months now.
Oh, absolutely.
We've been waiting three years for him to finish it.
I mean, I'm gonna ask somebody to help me go through all these and help with this. They had some major environmental problems up there, they did correct them. I met with his foreman several times, with Brian, and I walked around, and he has filled in some of the holes in the people's yards from where the old septic fields were. But there's still quite a few complaints here we need to investigate.
We should also check with the Conservation Commission and the town road boss, see if they have any outstanding issues that remain unaddressed.
I can speak for the Conservation Commission. We're pretty happy with what he did. He went up there, they cleaned everything near the riverbanks that they dumped in there, they got it greeted off pretty well.
Glenn Gardner, 12 Home Terrace. I just wanted to... I'm glad you're pushing this back. There are probably some more papers out there that I haven't brought back in because I didn't know where this was heading. Would you like me to get the rest of those before December?
Yeah, please.
From other residents?
Because they just didn't give them to me on time and stuff like that. To be honest with you, we're gonna address the items for the septic field, anything related to the septic.
Like you said, well, that's good that they've got that part, but I'm still concerned with the alarms still going off and issues like that, as far as how it's working.
Does the alarm still go off?
He has started filling the few holes. Not mine. I don't think he's ever gonna come to my house, to be honest with you. But so they have started some of that, but not completed any of it.
Does the alarm still go off? I was assured it was not doing it anymore.
I don't know. Like I said, that was the people down below telling me that. I can double-check out all that for you if you'd like, and see if they've gone off recently. Maybe they haven't anymore, I don't know.
I talked to Brian, the foreman, and he said he had it fixed, so...
Okay, I mean, he might have. I mean, it's been a couple of months since I've heard about that. So I'll just double-check him with the residents if you'd like, and we'll go from there, but... And then we'll talk about it in December. Hopefully you'll take care of some of these other issues.
Glenn, I don't think you should wait till December 9th to be...
Well, I won't wait till...
If you have any issues, or anybody has any issues...
Get them to me as quick as we can.
Oh, yeah.
I'll get it tomorrow if I can. No, I won't wait till...
And you'll go and find Mr. DEEP?
Yep. Great, we get it fixed. No, I won't wait long.
Okay.
No, what I plan to do is copy these and give them a copy to Mr. DEEP.
Okay, that's cool.
And then, or meet Brian up there and see what's going on.
Yeah. Like I said, I'm not... I don't live down there, so I don't know when they're going or how long they've been going. I just know that that's in the paperwork, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one question for the board on this issue. There is no requirement to look at the standards for adjusting rents to notify the residents of Victoria Villa that petition had been made to increase rents. Shall I, next time we have this on the agenda, notify the residents?
Okay, yes, before.
That was my other question, I forgot.
Yeah, we'll have it on December's agenda.
September 9th, we'll notify the residents.
We'll have all the residents know.
Yeah, that's why I was a little confused when I didn't hear about it, and I was like, why didn't the residents hear about this? So, thank you.
No, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I've got company coming tonight, so... That was the real reason why I was worried about this meeting. Thank you.
I don't think we voted, right? We made the motion in the second, but I don't think we voted yet.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, my phone. Okay, we're closing as a mobile home rent control board. I'll reopen, and we will go to...
I'm gonna look when this is gonna fix the settlement.
The Dalton... I mean, revisit the master plan. Joe, would you speak to this?
Yes, this is a... Just a request back in September, that we could revisit the master plan, because as
that we could revisit the master plan, because as I became a select board member and just looked at different documents, this one kind of popped up as I read through it. And it was done in 2016, so just get an update on items that were, you know, in the target of that one to three-year timeline, and just kind of check in where we are. So, I don't think we have the answers tonight, but I think there's a lot of great detail in here that we should just kind of understand pieces and parts and what they are. And just because there are school committee members here, there's also pieces in here that are suggested leadership to help with some of this, CBRSD with some programs, so there's some things in there specifically called out. So I want to make sure that connection's made too, on that. So, I'm not sure what's next, but that's kind of my proposal, is how do we just get an update generally on this, on this plan?
The planning board is planning and has for some time to work with some of the other committees, ask them more details about where they are with the, the various projects have been assigned to different committees, as you can see on the sheet. Unfortunately, the planning board got tied up on some zoning issues on Hubbard Avenue. We spend almost all our meetings lately on that issue. We hope that that will end soon, and we can get back to other projects that we have actually been postponing on. So it probably will take a good two months before we really have a better update on what's going on. But I certainly agree with you that we do want to make sure that some progress is being made on those items. I mean, it's a 10-year plan, and there were certain things that supposed to sort of have been accomplished at three years, which we're past that mark now. And we want to make sure that people are aware of the ones that are supposed to be done by five years.
A lot of great work on this. When you look at it, it's a thorough plan, it's a lot of great pieces that are called out.
A lot of people spent a lot of time on it, and the town also spent money on it, so we do want to make use of it.
As we check those boxes off, it'd be great to maybe even use that website to announce that those things are complete or in place, or different plans.
That would be good.
And exciting.
Edward, is there any way you would be able to investigate the ones that are high priorities for the select board?
Yes, yes.
Would you do that? How much time would you think you would need for that?
I still would probably, we'd probably be two months before, we probably, wow, I mean, it's late in the year already, wow.
By the first of the year?
Yes, yes. Maybe the first meeting in January.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Joe?
Yeah, well, that's great, yeah. I appreciate the question.
That'd be a good goal. That would be a good thing for the new year.
And even if we get some of the medium ones slapped on too, so.
Yeah.
We'll do our homework.
Well, we just need to adjust some timelines and things as, you know, other things creep up.
Absolutely.
If something's actually got done.
Yeah.
Check those off, celebrate your success.
Yeah, I've been going to mention those several times.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next is item 12, approval of the intermunicipal agreement with Burt's Regional Planning Commission for the stormwater. Mr. Kent?
This is the annual agreement that we've had with Regional Planning to give us some staff assistance as we implement our stormwater management plan. Actually, we pointed someone new to the Stormwater Management Commission this evening. The scope of services is attached as the first part of this, so you can see exactly what the Regional Planning Commission staff does for us. And I didn't ask Melissa, who's been the principal staff person, Melissa Preventure, for many years. I didn't ask her to be here, but if you want a more complete report as to what they've been doing, I can ask her to come at another time. So this is a simple intermunicipal agreement. It's for $11,000. We never spend half of that usually, but at least they give us enough, enough of a budget, so that if we have run into something unusual, we can do that. We're into a whole new round in the so-called National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, new five-year permit, and we've got to implement some different things that we haven't done before.
Until recently, I was a member of the Stormwater Management Commission, and I could say that Melissa, a really very valuable service. We wouldn't have had anything that would have satisfied, I suspect, the DEP if it wasn't for her and the EPA.
Yeah, she's top-notch. When I was on there, she was invaluable.
Ken, you're supposed to sign this, right?
Yeah.
So you wanted us to vote to give you, authorize you to sign this?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the town manager, Kenneth Walto, to sign the renewal, the annual renewal agreement between the Burt's Regional Planning Commission and the town of Dalton as regards the storm water.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. There's very further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And they're going to get into the, eventually, how much our water, we're getting into our sewer systems from the storm drains?
Yes.
Because we're getting charged. We're getting charged for that.
Yeah, the INI program.
It's actually a requirement that we actually do that by the state.
Where's that going to start, Ken?
Well, we really have to renew our agreement with Connie Bond, and then they'll start right away to do the work on the INI.
There is, of course, a cost associated with this.
Yeah, it's called megabucks.
Yeah.
So I assume they won't start till the spring, which could be an opportune time.
Yeah, probably one of the better times for you. Yeah, because they'll, they'll, the next planned part of the INI study is to look at exactly where the discharge is coming from. We know general areas, but now we're going to go look at specifically where it's coming from.
Good. And then down the road, we are supposed to repair those things.
Right.
Cause the end.
Okay.
Millions.
Yep.
See, we bounced around. I want to make sure we've got that track. Okay, town manager updates. Ken, you're on.
Okay, the first item I wanted to report to you about is North Mountain Park. North Mountain Park, you remember, completed the environmental study, but we haven't completed the remediation. And we've been really waiting because the Regional Planning Commission applied for more money from the Environmental Protection, Federal Environmental Protection Agency, for their so-called revolving loan fund. And the original cost to do the study and to clean it up was thought to be $28,000, but the engineers, TRC, Environmental, submitted us a supplemental request for appropriation that's in the area of $9,000. That'll actually remove the tank and whatever other residual oil. It's only oil that's there. So we, Becky Slick is working on an application for us. They just got the money. And so Becky's going to submit an application. We're going to ask probably for $11,000, again, and Melissa Preventure's suggesting to make sure that we get it cleaned up. That's really where we are.
Okay, can they do it during the winter time, or?
I think so, yeah.
Good.
It's really a matter of getting the money in. Even though it's in a revolving loan fund, the municipalities don't have to pay it back, and I expect they'll be paying it, we'll come as a grant. The next item I have for you, thank, any questions about that? The next item I have for you is tax rate setting schedule. Our fiscal team is hard at work, particularly the assessors' office and the accounts office, completing those schedules we need to get our tax rate set. And you can see the schedule. I annually do this, and then I sit down and we look at the schedule to make sure it's real. The goal is to get our tax bills out by the end of December. That's the goal. So we are about in the middle of the process. We have to have, one critical piece is the tax classification hearing in front of the select board. And we've tentatively, with your approval, have scheduled that for Monday, November 18th. So that will be a special meeting. It's not on the regular meeting schedule. But November the 11th, which would be our usual meeting, is a holiday, so we moved it back to the 18th. And important that we do it at that date, so we can wrap things up, get approval from the Department of Revenue for the tax rate, and then get the bills out the door.
Is everybody okay with that?
The next item, we should have some information about Hampshire Power. You remember, the electric company that supplied our power was not an electric company at all. It was the Hampshire Council of Governments, and their electricity arm, power arm called Hampshire Power. You might remember, a few months ago, I told you that the Commonwealth was dissolving Hampshire Council of Governments. Hampshire Power is going to survive, but it's going to be put into what's something called something new that I've just learned about. It's called a benefit corporation. It's a for-profit corporation with a public purpose built into its Articles of Organization. It's called a public benefit corporation, so it's going to be a for-profit corporation. And in the meantime, what has happened here is that that was dissolved. You had, at the time I brought this to you, had authorized an assignment of the contract to a private sector firm, I think it was called Sun Power. Well, that didn't happen because the corporation was, or the governmental organization was dissolved. So our accounts have been transferred back to Eversource, supplying all of our electricity now. And Eversource reprices electricity every six months. So it's, our rates are set to go up pretty shortly. So what you see in front of you is a proposal by Hampshire Power to stay with them for at least a year, and I think the supplier's going to be Sunwave. But they are offering to supply power at the same rate as we have presently contracted with the Hampshire Council of Governments. Our contract was to have run through the end of October, but they said they've already been switched back to Eversource.
Looking at these three, for nine cents, is that correct?
Yeah.
I mean, you can't compare that to Western Mass or Eversource.
Yeah, it might go up to about 13 cents for the winter time, but it comes down. It comes down in the spring, repriced every six months. And they have, they have a statutory obligation to get power for us at the best rates that they can. The advantage of going with something like, with a group like this, is that your rates are stable over the year. They don't fluctuate up and down.
Now, people with solar arrays, if they rent them, they still have to pay a little electric to, say, at times. Now, would they be eligible for this decrease, or they?
This is only for a town government. This isn't the so-called, you know, we were in an aggregation plan too, where any resident can take advantage of the aggregation prices. This is unique to the town government.
Okay, they're going to propose another one for the residents?
No, that right now is being handled through Colonial Power, the supplier, under the aggregation plan. So this is only for the town government. It'd only be for a year. I spoke to the person who wrote to me, Meron Goldstein. He's also a guy working on the Cow Power project, and he was at our opening down there. And, you know, I asked him about this. The reason I'm getting into benefit corporations and all of that is that it presents contracting problems. You could have a simple, you could have an intermunicipal agreement with any other municipal entity without jumping through a lot of hoops. You could just agree. You agree, just like we did with Regional Planning. If you all agree, then we sign up. With something like this, I'm not quite sure what the contracting process is, although there is an exemption in state law for power contracts or energy contracts. So if you like this and you'd like me to go forward with it, what I'll do is I'll talk to the inspector general's office and make sure that we're following the proper process.
I mean, yeah.
Because there appears to be an exemption in state law. I just haven't used it. But the other municipalities that, you remember, Hampshire Power had a particular service in providing this power to municipal governments all over Western Mass. He tells me that the governments, the other governments that receive power from them have signed up, and they have really raised these issues. Guess that's a problem.
Ken, you probably saw this. There's a phone number on the bottom here, the contact your legal staff. 617-727.
No, I didn't see that.
Yeah. That's an attractive price, to be honest with you.
Well, it is, so I think we should.
Might be a start if you look at the legalities of this.
So you need a motion, or?
Yes, so I move forward with it. You can sense this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. The Habitat Project, we just, I got in touch with Habitat. If you were ready, ask them where they were, what we're doing. Remember, we sent them a purchase and sell agreement, attached that was a land disposition agreement. I hadn't heard back from them. I got in touch with them. I just got the documents back this afternoon, and I haven't had a chance to really go into it at all to know what their reservations are. One thing I saw was our documents required that us, required that we have a preference for residents of Dalton. But according to what I was told, unless we had multi-family units, multiple units, we could set aside 70% primarily for Dalton residents, but when you have one unit, we can't do that, because it has to be done by lottery. So that's the only thing I know about it right now. Okay.
You know whether there's going to be any action on this, on the disposition of the property, the closing?
No, no, because they just got the documents back this June, so.
I think we did this back in June, didn't we?
Yeah, probably June, July. We got it right out there.
And they're the ones that pushed it, for us to get it done.
I don't have any other items I can think of. If anybody has any questions?
I have a question for you. What about some of these houses around town? I've seen this, like, notices on abandoned houses. Now, what do we do with them?
Well, you might remember that we've got the attorney general looking at that under receivership program to see which. So as far as I know, they're still investigating. We haven't had any results. They're supposed to get back to us, tell us which houses would fit in the receivership program.
Yeah, that'd be good to get that moving, so we can get that on the tax roll.
I'll talk to him.
We target, yeah, I was talking to him about the same issue, about junk houses. He wasn't away down the street from me. Anyway, he said the same thing. There's this new program by the attorney general that they can evaluate and put them in receivership, or they can facilitate the disposition or correction of the property. So, you know more about this.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for Ken? Okay, remarks of the select board. I just have one. It's another question for Ken. Has there been any movement on the APR land?
Yes, I got a communication, email communication from the commissioner of agriculture, and said that he's assigned staff to take a look at this, and he's going to get back to us on it.
Okay, okay, perfect. Anyone else?
I have a question for Ken. Can you just check in on the crosswalks for Main Street?
I'm glad you raised that issue too, put it on here. We had trouble coming to agreement with the, with the Department of Transportation on how we were exactly to do this. So we had a meeting out in the field. And unfortunately, the result of that meeting was, we don't have the engineering expertise to give them what they want, so I'm going to hire an engineer to draw up the plans, as we did out there at the corner of Rudy, who's at Tonic Street. So that's where we are. But at least we know, we know what hurdles we have to face, and we got it all together with the state engineer.
Don't they understand it's a big safety problem?
Ken, is that for both locations or different locations?
Yeah.
One other con for great community event coming up this Friday and Saturday. Leconne High School for arsenic and old lace. Great performance, and I think the stage looks wonderful. I banged a few nails in that myself, so. But the kids are ready and a great group over there, so it's Friday and Saturday this week. So I think it's 7 o'clock, and tickets are, I think, $9 for adults and 7 for students, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Leconne.
Leconne High School.
Okay. Okay. Brings us to items for future agendas. Is there any?
I have one I saw in that file of information in the, in our conference room, a letter from Mr. Scott Clement, we got.
I got it right on my list.
Yeah, so his, his request is that he has a service dog, and he pointed out some master on a law that there should not be a dog license for a service dog, but our bylaws in the town don't make that clear. So he paid us $20, but he was just bringing to our attention that under mass law, we may want to consider that. So something we may want to get on the town warrant, or change a bylaw. If there's another avenue to change that, I don't know.
Yeah, we need to put that under agenda to talk about, so.
Okay, yep.
We can put that on November?
Sure.
And Edward, I'm going to put you on for January. How's that for the master plan?
Ken, what year?
Double 2-0, 2-0, 2-0. And we know where you live.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else for items of future agendas? Brings us to our announcements. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., with the exception on the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Town Hall, and from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach Mark at a specific number, which is 413-464-563- You can reach Mark at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. I hold office hours by appointment in the Town Hall or at the Senior Center. For further information or schedule an appointment, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11. The Dalton Green Committee and Board of Appeals are both looking for new members. If interested, please contact the Town Manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. Larry Parnas from the Burt's Eagle is on a fellowship into May. He assures the town that the Burt's Eagle will continue to cover the news for the town. I declare an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn to executive session in preparation for litigation and not return to open session.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, roll call vote, Mark.
Yes.
Edward?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bob, yes.